To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to Ozark City Hall. We're glad you're here for the Board of Aldermen meeting and engaging with your elected officials. Listening to perspectives of city residents, business owners, and other community members helps our elected leaders make more informed decisions. Before the meeting begins, let's review our rules of order. These ensure the meeting is orderly and efficient while allowing everyone who would like to speak an opportunity to do so. There are two opportunities for you to speak: during the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion of the meeting, and during public discussion of new bills and resolutions. During the agenda's scheduled visitor and guest portion, anyone who signed up at the city clerk's office before 5:00 p.m. the Wednesday before the meeting can speak to aldermen about the topic they specified. Now, in the public discussion of new bills and resolutions, that allows you to give comments for aldermen to consider before they make a decision. Anytime anyone is speaking, the following rules apply. First, only one person should speak at a time. Please be respectful of the person speaking and hold your comments until it's your turn. Second, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone. Third, you must first provide your name and address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments. These forms are provided near the entrance. You also must state your name and address to the Board of Aldermen using the podium microphone. Fourth, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and aldermen. Finally, all speakers have five minutes. A digital timer will show you the countdown. The light will change from green to flashing yellow when two minutes are left. It will stay yellow at the one-minute mark. Your comment time is up when the light turns red. The mayor or alderman may have additional questions for speakers after this time limit. Occasionally, the board will invite someone to make a presentation at the meeting. This is only to give information to the board about a specific topic. These presenters will have no time limit on giving their information. This meeting will be livestreamed and recorded with video and audio unless there are technical difficulties. The use of cell phones or other devices is discouraged during the meeting. Please silence your phones right now. Again, thank you for being here and engaging with the city of Ozark. The meeting will begin shortly.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Aiken?
Here.
Alderman Campbell?
Here.
Alderman Galloway?
Here.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Here.
Alderman Metcalf?
Here.
Alderman Snyder?
Here.
We have six "I" votes. Motion carries.
Thank you. We have before us two sets of minutes. The first one is from the April 7th Special Session 2025. Any questions or anything about these? Okay, I'm not seeing. Is there a motion that we approve?
Motion to approve.
Second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we approve the April 7th, 2025 Special Session minutes that was made by Alderman Metcalf, Senator Alderman Aiken. All in favor voting on the motion to approve these minutes. Do so by show of hands, please. And that does carry. Okay, now, next set is the from a regular session on April the 7th, 2025 minutes. Are there any questions about these as printed? Yes, sir.
On bill number 3647, it says motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was actually Alderman Galloway, the sponsor, that made that motion. And I did not second it. It was Alderman Aiken that seconded it.
Okay, okay. Have you made this notation?
Yes, I made the notation, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And I request a roll call vote on this one?
Okay, so therefore, any other questions about these minutes?
Which bill was that?
3647.
I think they're doing some searching right here. Y'all doing some research? Alderman Galloway?
Is that the clerk's? I understand.
Yes, I don't have my minutes in front of me, but that would make sense. And Alderman Galloway would sponsor any administrative bill. Or Alderman Campbell, it's Alderman Galloway, so.
Are we ready to continue? Are you?
I'm just sorry. I'm just trying to catch up to 3647?
Yes.
So Alderman Galloway made the motion. But Alderman Hutchinson did not second?
This says Alderman Campbell seconded it, but I did not. It was Alderman Aiken that seconded it.
3647?
Forty-six.
Oh, forty-six.
Yeah, thirty-six, forty-six.
Thirty-six, forty-seven.
Thirty-six, forty-seven. Was that reading it right? Hutchinson, Alderman Hutchinson did not second it.
That's not what my minutes say.
It appears there are two motions. So there's the motion to read, which shows first, and it shows that Alderman Galloway and then Hutchinson. And then if you read below the presenter, I think that's where the point is being made.
It was the roll call vote that I'm questioning. Okay.
Okay, any other questions? So, okay. There's a motion. Okay, so therefore, the regular session, April 7th, 2025 minutes, that motion is made by, who wants to make this motion as corrected?
A move that we approve the minutes as corrected.
As corrected. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. So the motion is that we're going to approve the April 7th, 2025 regular session minutes as corrected. And by roll call, please.
Alderman Snyder?
Aye.
Alderman Aiken?
Aye.
Alderman Galloway?
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf?
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Alderman Campbell?
Aye.
We have six "I" votes. Motion carries.
Thank you very much. There's no ceremonial matters tonight, but we do have two scheduled guests. We did have the Ozark Chamber Monthly Report, but Chris Russell, the CEO, present, had me out of town today. And so he will not be here. He'll be scheduled later date. But we do have next from Ozark Historic River District, their report, an update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Alderman. I'm Diane Richardson, the Executive Director for the Historic River District. And it's my pleasure to be here this evening with a little update about what we've been doing the last few months. I want to begin by talking about our annual gala that was held as our fundraising event early in April. Many of you attended, and it was a really good turnout. The first one I had attended, it was a wonderful evening, and we had a good crowd there. So looking forward to doing that again next year, and we appreciate your support at that event. I want to just share with you some of the things that I've been doing and some notes that I've taken. Last week, I spent some time walking around on the square. One of my goals is to meet the business owners and the property owners in the downtown area. And so I spent my morning on the west side of the square, stopping in all of the businesses and meeting the owners and several customers in the area. It was a great experience. And that is one of my favorite things of my job to do, is to get to know the community. So I'll be doing that at least once or twice a month, and hope to make it around the square by the first part of June. One of the things that's on our agenda for the board and for the organization are trainings, and part of that is webinars and actual physical attending, some trainings. So I had the opportunity in March to visit the Main Street community of Fayette, and there were about 100 different communities represented there. And so I had the opportunity again to visit with them and get some really great ideas. And my takeaway from that was the people in your community are the best asset in your community. And so that's something I'm going to be focusing on throughout this year especially, is just what we have going on in the community. In addition to attending trainings, we've also had some of our board members who have done trainings of their own. If you are familiar with Catherine Dowdy, she has spent the last month doing some extensive historic training at our design meetings, and that's held at the library. And then Susan Collins participated with an online webinar through the State Office of Missouri Main Street. And there were four other communities represented, but Susan got to represent our community and talk about our historic downtown area and a walking tour that we do every year. And she had several questions that came up during that webinar. So that had the potential to reach another 180 communities. So a lot of people got to hear about the city of Ozark during that time. We are pursuing grants to currently that we are pursuing, and we have several others in the hopper that we're looking at. And our goal is to look for opportunities to stack the resources available to us with other partners. And so that's also at the top of our agenda. We are ramping up appreciation efforts and recruiting efforts for, excuse me, for our volunteers. And part of that includes those people that help us to prepare for the cruising on the square and celebrate Ozark, which is coming up in June, June 16th. Next month is Historic Preservation Month, and so you'll see me around town with some materials and information that we're going to be handing out to our partners, including the city, the chamber, and Show Me Missouri, and Show Me Christian County. So we'll be hitting the streets hard with that information as well. Our committees, which are four active committees, are continuing their monthly meetings. And in the last six weeks, we have handed out via email 178 newsletters. It's the first time that we've done newsletters with the organization. We're doing those quarterly. Of those 78 that went out, 96 of them were opened, which is a 52% engagement rate, which is really good for the first time. So we're preparing our second quarterly newsletter, which you'll have all kinds of information about things that are going on within the Historic River District. One of the other things that is, that people have asked me about frequently is the update on the kiosk in downtown, which the kiosk project was started before I jumped on board. But I've seen the beginning, initial stages of it, and we're almost completed with that. And it has changed, and it looks very good. And it will be a delight to have that in the downtown area. We want to make sure that we have all of the accurate information about the trails that are being expanded, as well as the new businesses that are in and included in the area. So we don't want to leave anybody out, and we want to make sure that people visiting our community and our citizens know what is available in the district. So that's a brief list of what we're doing. There's a lot of other things that go on behind the scenes, but we hope that everybody has a chance to visit everything going on in the Historic River District.
Any questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
For being here tonight. Next, we have Ms. Sheri Horning from, she lives on Hartley Road, and she would like to speak to us tonight.
Good evening. My name is Sheri Horning. I live at 1509 East Hartley. And I just want to say that I love Ozark. And we have lived in this area for approximately 30 years. We started out in Springfield, lived there for around eight and a half, moved to Sparta, loved it, built our dream home there, was there for 18 years. Then we went to Huma, Arizona for four, and then we came back. And we now live in Ozark. And we love it. We have lived on Hartley for about three years now. And the reason that I feel compelled to speak this evening is the fact that that stretch of road between Third Street and Ozark Elementary School is very unsafe. The stretch of road we live on is a few blocks west of the school. There are several issues at play that contribute to making Hartley unsafe. The speed for this road is posted at 25 miles per hour. This is ignored by most drivers. There have been electric signs to record the speed of drivers there at least two times that I'm aware of. This has had no permanent effect on slowing drivers down to the posted speed. There have been times when ticket riding was increased for this area as well and produced the same result. This stretch of road is hilly, curvy, and narrow. There's no center stripe. And in most cases, excuse me, in most cases, if there is, it is so faded it cannot be seen. One of the most important and prominent issues is the streetlight situation. That's really what I want to talk about. We have noticed at night, there is very little illumination along this stretch of road. Once you pass the downtown area, turn off the road straight onto Oak, turn right at Second Street, and continue onto Robertson, which turns into 10th, then 11th, then curves left and becomes Hartley. It is very dark. The streetlights that do exist do not match each other and are not on. Currently, there are three different styles of streetlights on this stretch of road. We have noticed that when other lights are on, several are not. I think this is a very dangerous situation for people out walking at night. We've seen many walking dogs and groups of teens out walking also. It's very hard to see anything, the current situation, with this current situation. Warmer weather is going to increase the traffic situation for drivers, as well as bikers, walkers, and kids being outside on the road. I'm asking the board to kindly consider increasing public safety by buying and installing working streetlights and making sure they are properly maintained. Thank you for your time and consideration. That's it.
Thank you very much. Was there any questions from the board? I think Alderman Campbell, sir.
Just to add some credibility to what you just said, and I never thought about this till just now, but, you know, we had an alderman, I would say, within the last month or two, we've had more than one conversation about the, about whether or not we're happy with the performance of Liberty Electric on the streetlights. Some of you may remember, I don't even remember, I don't know what year it was, but we had a bicyclist killed on a dark street highway. It was Highway N-N here in Ozark. It's not been that long ago. So just to add credibility to what the lady's saying, I reinforce the request that has been made by other aldermen, that we get Liberty on board. And it's even gone to the extent where it's been voiced at city council. It's gone to the extent that Liberty is disrespecting us when we try to call them, and not me, when I say us, I'm talking about city staff. We all know what I'm talking about. And that's just not acceptable. That's not something that we need to put up with, or our citizens need to live with.
Thank you, sir. Alderman Snyder?
This is definitely a concern that I believe Alderman Campbell has. I am the alderman that expressed that. And I do believe we need to do more to make this happen for you folks. As Alderman Campbell said, Liberty is a thorn in our side when it comes to public service. There's no other way to put it. I'm not ashamed to say it. I do believe we need to put some additional resources into this. We need to see if we can come up with some type of a plan to input from our side of the fence if they're not going to do it. The technology is there. We can do it, especially with the LED lighting. I know we have the Dark Skies Initiative, which this will not affect that. Dark sky simply means we don't want to pollute the sky, okay, with light. That's what dark skies is all about. It's not about the number of lights that we have. I have been schooled in that significantly. And I can tell you, this is something I do believe we need to address, and we, no more kicking the can down the road with it.
Alderman Galloway?
I had a question for you, ma'am. I don't, if you're not comfortable coming up, you don't have to, but, streetlights, illumination, you were thinking, you'd said that there were three of different colors?
No, different styles.
Different styles, I'm sorry, okay.
This is an observation.
But what you're talking about is adding street lamps on Hartley itself?
Hartley has one light that I'm aware of that's actually been paid for by a citizen because somebody broke into her garage, and she pays extra to have that light out there.
So, sorry.
There's nothing that I'm aware of that's even on that street besides that street light, till you get to the elementary school.
So there's a, would that be west of the elementary school on Hartley?
Correct.
Is, was it dark?
If you come west to the four-way at 14th and Hartley, there is a street light there, but that's the only one, till you get all the way down to Elementary East.
Between 14th and Hartley, and where the lights begin at the elementary school is dark, and you're saying it needs illumination?
Extremely dark. I forgot to mention in my notes that, two things that I'm aware of, somebody hit a deer in front of our house, and it ended up dead in our yard, and that happened overnight. And then my son-in-law had brought his two dogs, made a kennel in our backyard, and put them in there. They got, one of them got out during a storm, got out in Hartley and got hit, and nobody stopped. So I'm not saying that that could have been prevented by streetlights, but, you know, it maybe helped the situation. I don't know.
Well, the concern would be safety because it's near an elementary school, and
Yeah, that too. And we've got way more kids in the area now than we did.
I've traveled that road more than once, but not frequently because I don't, my business doesn't usually take me there. I'll make it a point to drive through in the evening.
Yeah, you'll be surprised. It'll be like...
I appreciate you bringing this to our attention.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, thank you very much. Okay, we'll now move on to our first reading tonight of bills. The first one is bill number 3657.
Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3657 on its first reading by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, okay. The motion is to place bill number 3657 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Galloway, Senator Alderman Metcalf. All in favor voting on motion to discuss bill 3657. Do so by show of hands. That does carry.
An ordinance declaring the results of an election held on April 8th, 2025, in the city of Ozark, Missouri. I can introduce this bill. It's pretty straightforward, but this bill just certifies the election results. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Yes, sir. Alderman Campbell?
Whenever I read the agenda, it looks like we've got three different items that we're voting on, 1A, 1B, 1C. But whenever I read the ordinance, I see no reference to items 1B or 1C. I don't think it's, personally, I don't feel like we need to be combining items into one ordinance. And for sure, we don't even need to, for sure, we don't need to leave out two of the three items out of the ordinance. If they're in the ordinance, they're in the ordinance. If they're not, they're not. So I would recommend that these three items be split into three separate readings. I think it's three, to make it even, I guess, to give what I'm saying more credibility. The ordinance states that it is declaring the results of the election that was held on April 8th. The second and third items are not doing that. The first item is, I think the first item is in order. I think the second two items are out of context with the ordinance.
Do you have an interpretation on this, or based upon the ordinance?
The items 1A, the swearing-in, 1B, the election of the mayor pro tem, and 1C, the assignment of the committees, are just ceremonial matters that occur in business of the board that historically occur after this first ordinance is read. And I think that's just how we historically have listed them on the agenda. They're not tied to this ordinance, which explains why those items aren't addressed in the ordinance. The ordinance is just approving the election results. If the style of the, those items is desired by the board to be looked differently, we can certainly do that the next time, or if you want to amend the agenda tonight, you can do that as well.
Because actually, as for item one, well, motion 1C is FYI-only, as for committees. We're not voting on that. And yes, there is a vote on 1B, and as for 1A, that's part of this current bill, in which the swearing-in of the mayor.
It's not, it's not part of the bill. It's just ceremonial. You just follow the bill, because you have to, you have to confirm the ordinance before you do that action. And we've just historically listed it as just kind of secondary items to this ordinance.
So what you're asking is that we have, create new bills for item B and C? Is that what you're asking?
They need to be handled in a different, yes. That could be one way of doing it. The item 1C could be handled as a ceremonial matter, but I feel like item 1B is definitely a, something that the board's going to be voting on, and it does not, need to be a ceremonial matter, nor part of item 1A. And I make that motion if...
I guess I have a point of order.
Yes, sir.
I mean, there's the form of the agenda, but as Alderman Campbell was stating, the bill itself is just the election. It doesn't reference 1A, or 1B, or 1C. I mean, I understand the point that maybe there's a better way to format the sub-points of the agenda, but the bill itself is attached to the packet, and it just references the election results and certifying that. And so I don't know that there's a basis to have bills that are not attached to a packet be read as to 1A, 1B, and 1C. It just seems to me we would just do one bill that's published, 3657. I don't know that there'd be a lawful basis for us to have ordinances for 1A, 1B, and 1C, is my point of order.
Alderman Metcalf is next.
Yeah, Your Honor, I have a question for counsel. 1B, election of mayor pro tem, would, would that be, if it was outside, not underneath in the agenda, would that be like a resolution, or it wouldn't be a resolution? What would that be classified as?
It's typically just fallen after the certify and the election results, because that's when your new board is sworn in and seated. And then by code, which our code mirrors the state law, the board must elect each year a mayor pro tem that will serve as the mayor pro tem from the board. And so that election falls immediately after the swearing-in, because that's something you do every year. And then you typically have the assignment of the committees. So those are just actions that take place but aren't tied to any ordinance.
Yeah. Yes, Alderman Campbell?
I kind of think that Alderman Galloway and myself are saying the same things, but giving different interpretations of it. As Alderman Galloway said, item number 1B and 1C, neither one are tied to what we're vote, tied to the ordinance. And that's the same thing I'm saying. I guess I fail to understand what would be... what would be, what would be wrong with erring on the side of safety? If, if, if that's a way to put it out, that's an, uh, not a good way to put it. I don't feel that we should be grouping two other items in with a very serious ordinance. I mean, I in no way, shape, or form disagree with the ordinance as written. But it's, I, I just can't understand how we can include two other items in the same ordinance and walk away with a clear way of even voting on it. There's, there's obviously two votes coming up. And the third one is, was mentioned, is a ceremonial matter. I mean, it's, it's your choi, it's mayor's choice. But I can't see how we can vote on two separate items under one ordinance. And I'm not opposed to being a resolution on 1B or, or whatever's appropriate in that fashion. It just doesn't need to be a part of that ordinance.
Okay, Alden Galloway, then I got a question.
Well, I'll just amend my motion, because I don't think that it's been seconded, has it? Did you second it? Okay. I mean, I think that just to avoid confusion, it's a very short ordinance, I can, we can just move to read it in its entirety. And then there'd be no confusion as to what it is that we're voting on.
So you, you're wishing, as for ordinance 3657, that the ordinance, the whole be read?
Yeah. Does that meet your concern, Alderman Campbell?
May I ask me?
Yes, sir.
Well, I think if you read it in its entirety, it's still not going to mention items 1B or 1C.
But that's my point. There'd be no confusion from anybody. There is, but we're just, it's just this printed material that we're, we're voting on if, if we want to go to that length. That would clarify that it doesn't apply to any other things that are on the agenda.
So my question is, are we only voting on the ordinance, or are we voting on the three agenda items?
Yes, I see attorney.
The agenda just sets forth the business of the board. This would only be taking up the ordinance that's at issue presently. And then the business of the board is listed below that. And so the next items that follow are just noting the business of the board. Or that's my understanding of the agenda.
Cash responds, I know Alderman Metcalf's got his slide on. He is next, let's have.
Okay. Can I make a motion that we amend the agenda and take 1A, 1B, and 1C? And call it the ceremonial matters? And just remove the one in front of them, ceremonial matters, right there?
Your honor, there's a point of order here. There's already a motion on the floor. It's been first, and there's been a second. We have to take care of it before we can proceed.
Okay. So, okay. So at this point, we're going to, as it's written right now, that was presented, the motion is that we vote on, oh, uh, bill number 3657. So, question, we think is we have not finished, uh, this is the first reading. So we have not followed all the protocol that we need to follow.
Yes, there's been a motion and a second to read the bill for a first time. And then there was a discussion that was being held. So to read it a second time, there'd be a motion and a second.
To read it the second time.
I haven't made that motion, I was just looking for input from Alderman Campbell, if that was necessary. To read it fully.
So, yes, sir, and then.
I'm okay with, with moving forward with bill number 36, I lost my thing, 3657. As long as, with the understanding that we are not voting on 1B or 1C as listed on the agenda, I'm fine, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Oh, okay. Any other questions? So, so, I want to make, understand something. So we, at this point, we're voting on to continue, because we have not followed the rest of the protocol as for this bill yet for first reading.
What you would do next is you would open it to public comment, I believe that's where you're at, in the stage, and then somebody would make a motion if they so choose.
Okay, okay. So at this time, because this is a first reading, I'm now opening this up to public comment. Is anyone here who is speaking in favor of bill 3657? Not seeing here who is opposed to bill 3657. Okay, I'm not seeing movement, so therefore I'm now closing the public segment. So, again, this was asked to be expedited tonight, so.
Your honor, I move that we place bill number 365 second, seven, on its second reading by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay. The motion is that we place bill number 3657 on a second reading by title only. That motion was made by Alden Galloway, segment Alden Aiken. All in favor of voting on motion to discuss bill 3657, do so by show of hands. That does carry.
An ordinance declaring the results of an election held on April 8th, 2025 in the city of Ozark, Missouri.
Okay. Any further staff comments? Anyone from the board? Okay.
Your honor, I move that we enact bill number 3657 as ordinance number 25-029.
Second.
The motion is that bill, enact bill number 3657 to become ordinance 25-029. That motion was made by Alderman Galloway, segment Aldman Metcalf, real call please.
Alderman Galloway. Alderman Aiken.
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf.
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson.
Aye.
Alderman Snyder.
Aye.
Alderman Campbell.
Aye.
We have six aye votes, motion carries.
Now we'll move on to the swearing in of the elected officers from the last April election.
Mayor Field join me out here?
I'll come first, and then you three together.
How we go together?
Yes, Richard Rydick. Do you? solemnly swear or affirm that in my duties as alderman of the city of Ozark, I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State and the Treasury, the ordinances of the city of Ozark, and the laws of the state regarding the cities of the fourth class, that I am not indebted to the city of Ozark in any manner, and that I will faithfully be myself in my office and discharge my duties according to the ordinances of the city of Ozark beginning the 21st day of April, 2025.
I do.
Very much. Do you say? Solemnly swear or affirm that in my duties as alderman of the city of Ozark, that I support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State and the Treasury, the ordinances of the city of Ozark, and the laws of the state regarding the cities of the fourth class, that I am not indebted to the city of Ozark in any manner, and that I will faithfully be myself in my office and discharge my duties according to the ordinances of the city of Ozark beginning the 21st day of April, 2025. So how do you go?
I do.
We'll now move on to, uh, item 1B, which is the election of the mayor pro tem. Are there nominations for the mayor pro tem at this time? Yes, sir.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Bruce Galloway as mayor pro tem.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Are there any of the nominations at this time for mayor pro tem? Not hearing at this time. We will now move to, to, to voting on Bruce Galloway as a mayor pro tem. I like to do this as a, oh, I'm sorry, ma'am.
Point of order?
Yes.
Discussion?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
In the past, there's been a tradition for a number of years of a term, uh, quote, term limit for the mayor pro tem's position with the rotation through the alderman. And I think that was in place for good reasons. The alderman rotated, in that way, a different ward could be represented every year. For example, I would not be in the mayor, be the mayor pro tem this year, because Alderman Galloway has been in it for the past two years. And we're in the same ward. I think we, another reason is we each bring a different perspective and a different viewpoint, given our life's experiences, skills, and area of knowledge. And rotation brings some strength in different areas. And third, perception is very important. Within the community, we very much desire to promote an image of transparency. When there are six aldermen in rotation, the perception of transparency in setting the agenda and involvement in administrative decision-making is reinforced on a weekly basis. The position of the mayor pro tem is to be selected by the Board of Aldermen. In my reading of the ordinance, that does not mean just a confirmation of the mayor's selection. In section 110.030, it states, "The board shall elect one of their number, their own number, who shall be styled mayor pro tempore and shall serve for a term of one year." And this is in contrast to the wording for other appointments to vacant Board of Aldermen positions, commissions, and boards, which reads by selected, um, by selection, by appointment, excuse me, selected by appointment by the mayor with the advice and consent of a majority of the remaining members of the Board of Aldermen. Alderman Galloway has just done an excellent job the two years he's been there. This is not at all about personalities. It's about procedures and what's best for the city, respecting that tradition, which I think was there for a reason. And it protects all of us. And so I was not informed of this selection until Thursday. And I really was not too concerned about it, because Mayor Good told me last year that the second year in his rotation was because we had so many vacancies and staff, and so much turnover, so much going on, and we needed that continuity. That's not the case now. And so I had thought we would return to the rotation. And was not told about it until Thursday that we would not be doing that. And it was, the Board of Aldermen never met, never had discussed who the board wanted as their, uh, as the mayor pro tem, which is to be their representative. And so I just wanted to state those reasons why my vote tonight will not be positive.
Okay, thank you very much. Yes, Alden Snyder.
Can we get some clarification on the ordinance, uh, that designates that there must be a rotation, or there's recommended to be a rotation?
The ordinance just states that the board shall elect from their own a mayor pro tem who shall serve for one year. There's no requirement for rotation in this, in the ordinance or the state law, they, they are written the same.
Okay. I was just curious, although I echo some of Alderman Hutchinson's, um, comments right there. If someone else, you know, wanted the opportunity to serve as mayor pro tem, I think that that, that person should definitely, you know, come forward. And if they are, I would support their endeavor with that. Alderman Galloway's done a fantastic job up here, and I will not speak ill of him. He has brought a lot of information, a lot of, uh, great information, a lot of insight, uh, to the table here. But if there is someone else that has an interest, you know, now is the time.
Anyone else? I'm not seeing anyone else from the floor speaking, so at this time, it's time to make, it's time for the vote. And I want it to be my real call, please.
Alderman Galloway.
Aye.
Alderman Hutchinson.
Nay.
Alderman Campbell.
Nay.
Alderman Aiken.
Aye.
Alderman Metcalf.
Aye.
Alderman Snyder.
Aye.
We have four aye votes, two nay votes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. And as for item 1C, the committees, this is informational only, that people have pointed for the committees for the next 12 months. And so we'll move on, and now I'm going to have my city attorney explain about resolution 216, 217.
Can we, can we have a discussion on that one?
On the, I'm sorry.
The one you just read, the appointments?
Oh, the appointments, yes, sir.
Piggybacking a little bit off of what Alderman Hutchinson had to say, I have something to say about the committee appointments. In the past, and when I say in the past, I'm talking about from 2010 until 2016. And a few years beyond, but for the most part, not, I don't believe. The mayor has always come to the alderman out of respect and, and let them know who he was wanting to do what and getting their input. I think it's a lack of, I'm going to call it disrespect, and this is only Eddie Campbell's opinion. I think it's a lack of disrespect or, or something that, uh, well, I, I, I don't accept the lack of disrespect that I feel like the aldermen are being shown in both these situations. But I'm speaking specifically of what Alderman Hutchinson mentioned, was talking about. I'm also speaking about the fact that I was never asked if I was okay with Alderman Galloway or anyone else by the mayor. I was also never asked which, uh, which committees I would prefer to serve on. Actually, I was in the middle of a conversation after a meeting here Thursday morning and, uh, was interrupted by the mayor telling me what he was going to do. And, uh, I'm not the type of board member that's going to do what a mayor tells me to do. I'm going to do what I feel is right. And I feel like that's what every elected official should do. That's my piece.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else at this time? Okay, not seeing. We will move on, and I'm going to have the city attorney explain about resolution 216, 217, what took place.
Yes, we have two items falling under item number two on the agenda. Both are resolutions. One resolution calls to reappoint the city clerk, and the second resolution calls to reappoint the deputy city clerk. In past practice, the city has always reelected both positions with the mayoral election. However, last year, the Board of Aldermen amended the city code, and now the clerk will, should serve for an indefinite term unless removed for cause. So we just got into a habit of doing that with every mayoral election, and we were so diligent, we did it again this year. And fortunately, we don't have to do that, and so we don't need to read these two items. There's no reason to do so.
Thank you. Any questions about our comment? Okay, move on then to first, to bill number 3658.
Yes, your honor, I move that we place bill number 3658 on its first reading by title and description only.
Second by. Second, okay. Okay, the motion is place bill number 3658 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, is segment Aldman Hutchinson. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss bill 365- All in favor voting on the motion to discuss bill 3658? Do so by show of hands, please. That does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending the corporate boundaries of the city of Ozark, Missouri by annexing one parcel, approximately one acre, located at 6101 North 23rd Street.
And we will welcome our community, the head of my director.
Hi. Good evening. The next two council bills just kind of relate to one another. The first is, represents a request or petition to annex this property. The second, of course, relates to the zoning of that property. So they'll be taken up individually, but a lot of the, a lot of the comments are relative to both bills. So this is a request to annex one acre of property located on North 23rd Street. It's the third lot south of Wakon Drive. It's located on the west side of the street. This property is contiguous to the city limits by way of the property on the west. So the western bounty, boundary of the subject site is contiguous to the property further west. The property is located in tier one of the urban service area. So what that basically remains, if they desire to connect to the city sewer and develop the property, it has to be annexed. It can't develop in the county otherwise. The property is under common ownership with three other properties. The property south, I've, there's a little red X on that map there, if you can see that. The property to the south is under common ownership. The property to the east across 23rd Street, those two lots are also under common ownership. There is two, I think, two residential structures on the property. I'm not sure exactly if they're occupied or how they are used, but the property is currently used as to store vehicles that are, kind of developed in concert with the rest of the in route business. So there is no, there's no conflict with that. It doesn't impact the annexation proposal. Wouldn't impact the rezoning for that matter. So this is a pretty fairly straightforward rezoning request. All the requirements have been met with respect to publishing and posting of the property. We haven't received any opposition to the case. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their March 24th meeting. Staff and planning and zoning both recommend approval. I'll be glad to answer any questions right now for you.
Any question from the board?
Okay.
I'm not seeing any. So since this is the first reading, I'm now opening this up to the public. Anyone here who would speak in favor of bill number 3658? This is your time. Okay. I'm not seeing movement. Anyone here who is opposed to bill 3658? I'm not seeing movement, so I'm now going to close this to the public. Any final comments from the board? Okay. This time, bill 3658 will be held over to a future meeting. We now draw attention to bill number 3659.
Yes, Your Honor, I move that we place bill number 3659 on its first reading by title and description only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is we place bill number 3659 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Metcalf. It was segment Alderman Hutchinson. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss bill 3659? Do so by show of hands, and that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending the zoning code and official map by changing the zoning classification of certain real property located at 6101 North 23rd Street.
Welcome back, our director.
So as I said, this is the zoning that would follow in concert with the annexation of the, of the same piece of property. It's one acre, same location as the previous bill. The Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this at their March 24th meeting as well. So these are, these are basically five standards that the planning, that the zoning code outlines that city staff, Board of Aldermen, the Planning Commission should consider when they're assigning or weighing zoning decisions. What are the properties, how is it currently used? How is it zoned? How are the properties adjacent to it used? How are they zoned? What guidance is offered from the city's comprehensive plan, excuse me? What development trends in general would impact the zoning and the future use of the property? And what other surrounding factors are, do we need to consider in terms of utilities, roadways, and things like that? This property is, is zoned currently in the county as residential. It doesn't reflect how it's used per se. I think it's used for storing vehicles currently. They have requested again to rezone it to I-1, which is an industrial zoning district. So this looks to be a subdivision that's, must have originally been platted as a residential subdivision. As I said, there's two houses on this site, and there's one at the end of the cul-de-sac. I'm not sure if it's used as residential. I don't think it is. But it's, over the years, it's obviously converted to more industrial manufacturing, warehousing, and distribution uses. So the map you see before you, everything that's colored yellow, blue, or red is located outside the city. So it's unincorporated property. Everything that's gray with an EX on it represents property that's already been annexed into the city. So as you can see, like I mentioned, the property to the west is, is annexed into the city, and that is zoned industrial as well. Properties in blue are in industrial zoning in the county's classification. The properties on the east side of the road, C-2, that's commercial. And then the other properties, although used differently, they're still zoned residential. So this is a little bit of, a little bit of a, it's a little chaotic, if you will, from a zoning perspective. But again, these properties to the south and properties across the street are owned by the same property owner. So whether or not they combine them, how it will be developed is a matter that will be taken up once it's annexed, it's zoned. Again, we have no major issues or concerns with the proposed zoning. There's really no friction. Zoning something adjacent to it is a good strategy that will reduce the amount of buffer yards and landscaping and some of those things they will have to comply with. So that's appropriate. The business model that this will likely follow would fall within that zoning district. It could fall within a C-2 zoning district. I'm not really sure how they're exactly planning to use it, but this isn't a problem. Staff wouldn't have a problem with this. The zoning, the comprehensive plan recommends general mixed use, and that's kind of a generic land use category that the comprehensive plan likely assigns when we don't know what the future use of it is, because it's not in the city and it's... So it's really kind of up to staff to use those factors that we talked about earlier to make a recommendation. Again, we have no concerns with this. They will have to comply with stormwater requirements. They'll have to deal with the Ozark Special Road District at the time it's developed. Connection to utilities, they'll work with Public Works. You can see from this map that there is water lines east and west of the site. There's also a sewer line further east that's not shown on this map, but they do have access to city utilities and several options there. All the requirements for the zoning requirements in terms of posting and publishing have been met. We didn't receive any protests or any violations or any concerns from adjoining property owners. Staff recommends approval, and the Planning and Zoning Commission did as well on March 24th. Is there any questions that I didn't cover?
Any questions from the board? Yes, Alum Snyder.
So the property can be serviced by sewer and water right now, or it is serviced by sewer and water right now?
It can be. They will, they will have to do an extension from one of those names, water and sewer both, but it can be, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Okay.
Not seeing any. Thank you, sir. Again, this is first reading at this time. I'm going to open up to the public. Anyone here who would speak for bill number 3659? This is your time.
Hi, my name is Danielle Richards. I'm with Lee Engineering, and I represent the developer. I don't have anything specific to add. It was a good summary. I'm just here to answer questions if you guys have any.
Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much for being here. Anyone else who wants to speak for bill number 3659? Anyone here who is opposed to bill number 3659? Not seeing movement, so therefore I'm going to close it this time to the public, to the public. Any final board response? Not seeing any. Bill number 3659 will be held over for a future meeting. We now draw attention to bill number 3660.
Your Honor, I'd like to make motion that we place bill 3660 on its first reading by title, description only, please.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we place bill number 3660 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Alderman Aiken. It was segment Alderman Metcalf. All in favor voting on the motion to discuss bill 3660? Would you so by show of hands, please? And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Vance Brothers LLC for street micro-surfacing, pavement, and construction improvements.
We now welcome our director, Jeremy Parsons.
Good evening. It's that time of year. We're starting to get warm, and that means that we're going to start tearing up some things and hopefully making them pretty by the time it gets cold again. So I want to talk to you a little bit tonight about our 25, 2025 bid packet. We just put out a relatively small big packet, and I want to walk you through this, but I want you to see our journey too, and I'm not going to belabor this. But it's, I'm so thankful for what the transportation sales tax has done for this community. And it's our job as staff and as a community to continue to check these boxes and to knock these projects off the list. These projects are not just willy-nilly. We came to you with a plan that was data-driven. It was based on pavement condition index. Some things have had to be changed and moved around based upon timelines or environmental concerns or things of that nature, but we've made steady progress. And I want to talk to you tonight about three relatively small projects, but they will continue to check those boxes off the list. As you all know, our downtown has a mixture of residential and residential collectors that have been neglected for some time. We brought this street to you last year, and this is what it looked like on 11th Street. I want to show you what it looks like today. Paved with some additional curb and gutter connecting into the apartments up there. So it's been a vast improvement. Again, that's because of the transportation sales tax. I want to talk to you quickly about the micro-surfacing. Micro-surfacing is a technique that we use to rehabilitate roads. If we've got roads that are structurally sound, but they just need some rehab in order to extend the life of those roads, we have been using micro-surfacing. I like to tell people it's like a ramped up version of a parking lot being sealed. When you see a new parking lot and they seal it and it's all black and pretty again, this is basically a quarter inch of aggregate that they call Modified Aggregate Quick Set, MAQ. And it is very effective, and it is very cost, you know, cost-effective in terms of what we pay for this is about, on average, one-fifth of what we pay for hotnecks. So it buys us time. It covers the roads. It helps keep the roads from weathering. So we're very happy with this product. This is a very difficult map to see, and I'm just going to warn you. I brought another one in the back, and if I need to bring it up front, I will. Because our town is so north-south facing, and this map to your left is north. So I'm going to try to point it out here. That's north. And I tried to put some, tried to put some, you know, local businesses and some key landmarks in there as well. But project one that we'll start with is up there off of Sunset. Many of you are familiar with the Jenny Penny and Morgan Courts up there. We also inherited a subdivision up there from the county some time ago, and it's got some streets that are failing. So that's the project furthest to the north or to your left. The project's out by Jackson Street and McCracken, kind of in the downtown area, right in that area. Those are to clean up some additional roadways that we feel like are just at that breaking point, that if we don't do something now, we'll pay more later. And then the projects that you see in between the come and goes, basically to the east of Third Street, we have been making a real concerted effort at the streets in the downtown area. And the streets in the downtown areas that are not commercial, they're residential, are residential collector. We like to use this micro-surfacing on that because they don't get the average daily trips that the commercial streets do. So it has been a very effective form of rehabilitation. I'll try to zoom in on these a little bit more. That's the Sunset one on the left that we talked about. The one's down by Jackson Street. You can kind of see there. And then the areas just to the east, it's, it's just very difficult to see. So if we need to bring the larger map up, we can. But it's spread out, but it's also based upon some, some data. The pavement condition index is what we're basing this on. I wanted to let you know as well that in the 2024 packet, we were able to complete the base bid and all one. That included 11th Street, which I just showed you, and Lark Street. We ran into fall and winter weather. The areas identified in green are actually part of that 2024 bid, and we will start putting that micro-surfacing down on, hopefully Thursday of this week is when they're scheduled to come in. So we'll get that rocking and rolling. I can see that they're bringing in materials right now over to the staging area, but this will really complete and provide kind of a nice canvas for the streets in the downtown. And again, help with the rehabilitation. I was excited about this. Usually when we go out for micro-surfacing, we only receive one, maybe two bids. I have never seen this Pavement Management LLC, but I like multiple bids because that keeps people sharpening their pencils, keeps them honest, it makes them work hard for our work. So good to see that this year. That's very hard to see too, so I'm going to click to the next one. That's the total number on this, 343,000, almost 344. And they were, you know, roughly $40,000 left and less than Pavement Management LLC. But that's what we're bringing to you tonight. I don't want to, like I said, belabor, but I'm, I'm excited to see that we just continue to click these off. And by the way, you'll see another bid packet later this year, and that'll make more sense after the next item on the agenda. So stay tuned.
I see Alum Campbell, sir.
Have we used Vance?
Yes.
Vance Brothers before?
Yes, sir. We've used them. I think this is their third or fourth contract. They've got a quarry down at Table Rock, but their main headquarters is up by Kansas City, and they do a lot of work up there. But very attentive, very detail-oriented, and great communicators. And you know how that is in the contracting business. It's, it's always refreshing to have somebody that communicates.
Okay. And follow up?
Yes, sir.
The acronym you used, something, something Aggregate Quick Set, I think was?
Yeah. Modified Aggregate Quick Set. I told a couple people I was going to try not to say that. Get it all slurred up. But it is another way of saying micro-surfacing.
Okay. Is, when you say quick set, that almost makes me feel like it's maybe not as flexible as asphalt? Is that the case or not?
Not as flexible.
The flexibility, just in give and take of the surface?
Yeah, I am very surprised because of the components in it. We have used this for the past several years. We've seen with the heating and the cooling that it does have flexibility. It doesn't crack a lot. What I'm really surprised with, and I'm happy to report, is the amount of snow pushing that we've done recently on top of these different types of surfaces. It has held up well.
So you don't see a lot of delaminating during the winter when you're?
No. And, you know, they, they say five to 10 years before you start seeing that, and we've, we've gone about, this is our fourth year, but we will report back. So far, our operations manager is just in love with this, so.
Okay.
Anyone else have questions for Director Parsons? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, this is first reading, and we'll open this to the public now. Anyone here who would speak for bill 3660? This is your time. Okay. Not seeing movement. Anyone here who would speak against bill 3660? Okay. There's no moves. At this time, we're going to close this to the public. Any final board response or questions? Yes, Alum Snyder.
This is for Jeremy. You had one of the resurfacings on Lark. Is that going to extend around into Niasse down at the bottom of the hill?
That was our last year, if I can bring that back up. That actually, the project only went past Innes Trail. It does go past Innes Trail a little bit there. When it turns into Marshall Lane, that is actually the county's will. So we kind of had to stop at our jurisdictional boundaries. We have had... We have had some conversations with the county and OSRD. The city has agreed to snowplow that area because they kind of got left in the dark over there, and we're on Lark anyways. But the jurisdictional boundaries and the deeds and all the paperwork that we find is that is a county road, Marshall Lane.
Gotcha. I'd very much like to see that conversation expanded, possible, especially for our residents that live down there.
Yes.
Anyone else? Not seeing? We're going to, Bill 3660 will be held over to future meeting. We now draw attention to Bill number 3661.
I move to place Bill 3661 on first reading by title only, please.
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is that we place Bill 3661 on first reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Aiken, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3661? Do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Hamilton &amp; Dad Incorporated for Robertson Street water main improvements.
And we'll welcome back Director Parson.
Yes, thank you. All right. So this next project, as I said, it will kind of be a precursor to the next transportation bid that we put out, our roadway improvement bid. This is that downtown project that we applied for with the OTO grant and received that. This initially started as a pedestrian, pedestrian project, and as we dug into the project a little bit more, we recognized there was the opportunity there to also improve the water systems in the area. When we look at a project, we start looking from underneath, and then we start working to the top. So getting the utilities done for Robertson Street is actually Phase One of this project. Later in the year, we'll come to you with a street and a sidewalk improvement bid packet, but we've got to get the infrastructure in place first, and we've got to get that right. So tonight, what we did, or recently what we did, is we put a bid packet together for a water main project that basically extends from Second Avenue and Oak all the way up Robertson Street to Ninth Avenue. This replaces a lot of cast, old cast iron pipe, and it also helps set some additional stub outs. We're seeing infill in this area. I don't know if you've noticed that. We'll get some reinvestment in that area. So we're able to kind of tee that up for some additional infill, but we are also able to provide fire flow, which you hear us all the time, talk about the importance of that. So it is a pretty sizable project. It's over 2,000 layer feet, eight inch, and we're excited to get in there and start ripping and rolling. As I said, this is just, you know, the underbelly that we need to take care of first. We received several bids, and that hurts just looking at it, so I'm going to do that. I'm glad to say that we had five competitive bids. We have worked with Hamilton &amp; Dad in the past. They actually worked on a sewer line extension up by the Jeep dealership. We had a good experience with them, so we're confident that this is the lowest and qualified bidder, and we're looking forward to working with them. So if there's any questions about this water main project, and again, here in a couple months, we'll be coming to you with a full bid packet for the street and the sidewalks. And this is exciting project, this Robertson Street, the pedestrian connectivity and doing some things that can really slow down traffic on that road as well.
Any questions for Director Parson? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, this is first reading. I'm going to open at this time to the public, Bill number 3661. Anyone here who is in favor of this bill? This is your time. Yes, sir.
Good evening. Monty Horning, 1509 East Hartley. I would encourage the board to support this, especially given the plans to improve Robertson Street. It'd be a good idea to get the sewers done before we put a pretty street and sidewalks in and then dig them up to replace busted water pipes. Hopefully, this will carry on over to 11th and on down. That path is highly used by pedestrians, so any movement toward getting sidewalks in is a good move. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would speak in favor of Bill 3661? Anyone in, oppose opposition to Bill 3661? This is your time. I'm not seeing movement, therefore I'm going to close it to the public discussion at this time. Any final comments from the board before we move on? Okay. Bill 3661 will be held over to future meeting. We now draw attention now to Bill number 3662.
Yes, Ron. I move that we place Bill 3662 on first reading by title only.
And second by?
Second.
Okay. Okay. The motion is place Bill number 3662 on its first reading by title only. That was made by Aldman Aiken, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on this motion to discuss Bill 3662? Do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with ALMI Enterprises LLC for the purchase of a fabric bio solids cake storage building.
And we'll welcome back Director Parson.
All right. Now we get to talk about sewer. All right. So I'll make this as quick as possible. As you all know, we've put a lot of time, effort, and investment into our North Street plant. I just wanted to quickly tell you that we've got four phases over the last five years that we've put in place. Two buildings, the centrifuge, and what we're going to talk about tonight is number four. This recent aerial photo, if you see the area that's kind of highlighted there in a yellowish tone, that is our cake storage, our bio solid storage. That is a concrete encased with basically separated cells so that we can move that material around. We are now ready to put an enclosure over that. We know for a fact that this will help with the storage, as well as precipitation getting on that material can cause the microbiology and that cake material, biosolids, to kind of reactivate, so that will also help with the odor issues out there. So excited to do this. We budgeted, that's kind of what it'll look like there, and you can kind of see the different cells. You see these a lot at salt bars. MoDOT uses these for separate, or for several salt bars. But keeping that precipitation off is a good thing. That'll allow us to transport and move that material more efficiently. We received four bids for this. We budgeted about $195,000. The lowest bid came in about $122. We went through everything, called references, and we have no reason not to take that low bid, so let's take the low bid. But yeah, that's all on the cake storage, unless you've got any questions.
Yes, Alton Campbell.
Is this the cake that comes out of the centrifuge? Is that what we're?
Yes, sir. Let me see if I can go back. Yeah. So building number three on that exhibit is actually where we installed the centrifuge. I think, Mr. Campbell, you came out actually and saw the demo of that. That's where the cake comes out of, and then we then take that. It conveyor belts right out into a truck, and then the truck goes right over to where you see number four, and it dumps that, and that's what you'll have as far as that building right there.
Okay. Now, since we unfortunately have lots of wind here, it seems like this past year, what's it rated for wind?
So these are commonly used in Nebraska, Iowa, so the wind rating is very high. I don't have the exact number. I can get that for you. And as far as snow bearing, it also has a very distinct shape to shed that snow, so we're very confident in the engineering of this, and we will see, we will receive an engineered stamped set of drawings with this as well, so.
Anyone else from the board? Thank you, sir. Okay. Again, this is first reading. I'm going to open to the public now. Anyone here who would speak in favor of Bill 3662? It's now your time. I'm not seeing any. Anyone here who would speak against Bill 3662 in opposition? You have your opportunity. Okay. I'm not seeing movement, then we're now going to close this to the public discussion. Any final comment from the board? Okay. Not seeing any? Bill 3662 will be held over to future meeting. We now draw attention to Bill number 3663.
Motion to place Bill 3663 on first reading by title only, please.
Second by?
Second.
Okay. The motion is to place Bill number 3663 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Aiken, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3663? Do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Central Power Systems and Services LLC for the purchase of a generator.
And yes, welcome back Director Parson.
And this one's related to sewer as well. As we continue to do the upgrades for the Finley River Lift Station, the flow equalization, DNR requires that we have backup generators in case we lose power. We were actually able to purchase this much cheaper than the contractor, so we went out and received bids, and we're very confident that Central Power has the appropriate unit. The specs are there, and I have been told by Mr. Douglas, we're ready to move forward with purchasing this, and we are respectfully asking you to approve that purchase.
Okay. Any questions? Now, again, this is only first reading.
We don't need to explain.
Okay. I just thought the way you said it, I thought maybe?
I may have got excited.
You got excited, or? Any comments from the board? Okay. Thank you, sir. Again, first reading. I'm going to open now to the public, Bill number 3663. Anyone here to speak for this bill? Okay. Anyone here in opposition to Bill 3663? This is your time. I'm going to close it to the public then. Is this no movement? Final comments from the board? Not seeing any? Bill number 3663 will be held over to future meeting. Now we're going to look at Bill number 3664.
Your Honor, I move to place Bill 3664 on its first reading by title only.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to place Bill 3664 on its first reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Aiken, segment Aldman Campbell. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3664? Please do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, authorizing the city to enter into a contract with Independent Electric Machinery Company for specialized motor, pump, and mixer repair and maintenance services.
I understand we may have two directors speaking?
Yeah, I mean, we can. We can tag team this if you'd like. This just worked out well because Director Ponzer also has some machinery that he has at his facilities and at the pools that needs specialized repair. We call this kind of our Calvary Claus. We try to, you know, get as many certifications as possible, and we try to fix everything that's within our power, but with some of these very specialized mixers, rollers, aerators, sometimes it's beyond us. So we need to have somebody on contract to get them in and fix that, because most of the time you're looking to fix something like this. Time is of the essence, and you've got to have somebody that knows what they're doing, and that's how we look at it.
I don't have too much additional to add. While Mr. Parson is dealing with the water that keeps our city afloat, this primarily keeps our aquatic facilities going, and so for the people who are seeking recreational opportunities in the city, a contract like this allows us to quickly react to those needs as well, so.
Any questions for either directors on the board? Yes, Alton Campbell.
I'm looking for it, and it's probably on here. Where are they out of? What, where's this company, where they operate out of?
I don't have that form with me, I'm sorry. Independent? I want to say out of Springfield, but I can get you that information.
Okay.
Let me see if it's in my.
It's not a deal breaker, but just curiosity.
Yeah, it should be in the contract.
The contract notes that their address is Kansas City, Kansas.
Kansas City, okay.
I got you.
Sorry about that. I just got the explanation sheets up here, so.
All right.
I should have made Hayden answer that one.
Okay. Anyone else on the board? Questions? Okay. Not seeing any? At this time, we're going to open to the public, Bill number 3664. Anyone here who would speak for this bill? This is your time. Okay. Not seeing movement? Anyone here in opposition to Bill 3664? I'm going to close the public discussion now. Any final comments from the board? Not seeing any? Bill 3664 will be held over to future meeting. We're now going to draw attention to Resolution 2018.
Your Honor, I make a motion to read Resolution number 2018. Second.
Okay. The motion is that we read Resolution 2018. That motion was made by Aldman Snyder, segment Aldman Galloway. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Resolution 2018? Do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
A resolution demonstrating commitment to enhancing public safety within the city of Ozark, Missouri in support of the Missouri Blue Shield program.
And we'll welcome our chief police to the podium.
Well, I'll be brief. The resolution in front of you is a required aspect of Governor Kehoe's newly announced Missouri Blue Shield Community Program. It was introduced in 2025, actually on his first day in office, and its oversight is provided through the Missouri Department of Public Safety. The intention of the program is to recognize communities like Ozark that support law enforcement, and they support engagement and collaboration and partnerships between law enforcement and the community. Really, what it will do for us is it'll allow us access to additional and new grants that come forward to communities or departments that are able to obtain the Blue Shield designation. Thankfully for us, with our accreditation to the Missouri Police Chiefs Charitable Foundation, this is just one of the required things that we don't have. Everything else, we're well on our way to where we should be able to submit a very favorable package to the governor's office. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay. Using your very positive point.
I'm all for something like this.
I know, I do, I agree.
That's my comment. Anything that has to do with back in this blue, absolutely.
I agree. Okay. Since this is the first reading, I'm going to open to the public. Anyone here who would speak for Resolution 2018? Okay? Anyone in opposition to zero this resolution? Okay. I am not. So therefore, at this time, we're going to close this to public discussion. Any final board comments? I'm not seeing any, so move on to?
Your Honor, I make a motion to adopt Resolution number 2018.
Second.
Okay. The motion is that we adopt Resolution 2018. That was, motion was made by Aldman Snyder, segment Aldman Galloway. All in favor of voting on this motion to approve Resolution, to adopt Resolution 2018? Do so by showing hands. And that does carry. Now we'll draw attention to Resolution 2019.
Your Honor, I move that we read, or we place, no, we read Resolution 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And the motion is that we read Resolution 2019. That motion was made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on motion to read Resolution 2019? Do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
A resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Ozark, Missouri, adopting the rules of decorum. I'll be introducing this bill. If you recall, our interim city administrator, Ben DeClue, proposed that the board adopt rules of decorum. The rules of decorum establish a procedure for citizens addressing the board, staff addressing the board, and then the board addressing each other and citizens and staff. And so in that, the interim city administrator also suggested that this be brought forward annually with the election, just to be reaffirming that adoption. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for a city attorney? Plus, we get pretty much a good recap each meeting with the video, because that's where the points come from. Okay. Well, I'm not seeing from the board. Okay. Is anyone here, since this, who speaks for Resolution 2019 from the public? Yes, ma'am.
Jeanne Metcalfe, 1324 East Warren. I do agree with this because you can't hear if you're at home. And I think one of the requirements is that you have to speak into the microphone. And when you guys were actually being installed, nobody was speaking into the microphone. So this is a very good rule. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else who was to speak in favor of Resolution 2019? Okay, anyone in opposition? This is your time. Okay, I'm going to close this to the public now, since no movement. Any final board response? Nope. Okay.
Well, now I'm self-conscious. I move that we adopt Resolution 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, the motion is that we adopt Resolution 2019. All in favor of this motion to adopt Resolution 2019? The motion was made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Snyder, do so by showing hands. And that does carry. And now we have Resolution 2020 we're going to look at.
Your Honor, I move that we read Resolution 2020 by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, okay, the motion is that we read Resolution 2020. That motion is made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on motion to read Resolution 2020, do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
A resolution by the Board of Aldermen of the city of Ozark, Missouri, adopting the rules of procedure. I will also introduce this resolution. The Board of Aldermen some time ago adopted their own rules of procedure in lieu of following Robert's rules. Those rules of procedure have not changed in any manner as they've been brought back before you today. It was just recommended that they be re-adopted by the board after each election as well. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our city attorney? Yes, Aldman Campbell.
Would you, would you have the city attorney or the city clerk want to check for a typo, I guess it is, on the section 110 dot 220? I think it should be 110 dot 200.
Okay. Do you have that page number two that would help? You have the page number?
Oh, page five.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay. Have you all made the notation?
Yes, we can make a notation of that and correct that if it's the wrong reference, yes.
Okay. Anyone else from the board? Any questions? Okay, since this is first reading, anyone here from the public who wish to speak for Resolution 2020?
Yeah.
Not seeing anyone here in opposition to this Resolution 2020. This is your time. I'm not seeing, so I'm going to close this to the public then. Any final board response? Before we move on? Okay. I don't see any.
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Resolution number 2020 with the notation presented by Alderman Campbell.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is that we adopt Resolution 2020 as with the notation requested by Aldman Campbell. This motion is made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Hutchison. All in favor of voting on the motion to approve Resolution 2020, do so by showing hands, please. Okay, that does carry. Okay, now we'll draw attention to second reading bills. And that first one we'll be looking at is 3652.
Mayor, I move that Bill 3652 be placed on its second and final reading by title only.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, the motion is that we place Bill number 3652 on second reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Aiken. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3652, do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a contract with SWT Design Incorporated for Parks Master Planning Services.
And we'll recognize our park director, Hayden Ponzer.
Good evening. I have no new information to add for this bill, but I am happy to answer any questions in regards to this proposal. And then the contractor from SWT is available via Zoom as well for questions.
Okay, Aldman Hutchison? Oh, your mic was off, I thought. Sorry. Any questions from the board? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, sir. Okay. Okay.
I move to adopt Bill 3652 as ordinance 25 dash 029.
Second.
30? No, excuse me. Oh, that's right, we, it would be, yeah, 30, because the first bill we expedited. Yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you for that. So the motion is that we adopt Bill 3652, which become ordinance 25 dash 030. That motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Aiken. Roll call, please.
Aldman Campbell?
Nay.
Aldman Aiken?
Aye.
Aldman Galloway?
Aye.
Aldman Snyder?
Aye.
Aldman Metcalf?
Aye.
Aldman Hutchinson?
Aye.
We have five aye votes, one nay, motion carries.
Okay, now we'll draw attention to Bill number 3653. Second reading.
I move that, Mayor, I move that Bill 3653 be placed on its second and final reading by title only.
Second by?
Second.
Okay, the motion is that we place Bill 3653 on a second reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Aiken. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3653, do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance authorizing the city to enter into a contract with SWT Design Incorporated for site planning services at Garrison Springs Community Forest.
Welcome back our park director again.
Good evening. I have no new information to add, but still happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our park director? Okay, I'm not seeing any. Thank you, sir.
Mayor, I move to adopt Bill 3653 as ordinance 25 dash 031.
Second by?
Second.
The motion is that we adopt Bill number 3653 to become ordinance 25 dash 031. That motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Snyder. Roll call, please.
Aldman Metcalf?
Aye.
Aldman Campbell?
Nay.
Aldman Aiken?
Aye.
Aldman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Aldman Snyder?
Aye.
Aldman Galloway?
Aye.
We have five aye votes, one nay, motion carries.
We now draw attention to Bill, for second reading, Bill number 3654.
Mayor, I move that Bill 3654 be placed on its second and final reading by title only.
Okay, second by?
Second.
The motion is that we place Bill number 3654 on a second reading by title only. Motion made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Snyder. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3654, do so by showing hands, please. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending Chapter 120 Parks and Recreation by adding one new section, Section 12060, regarding the use of metal detectors and prospecting.
Welcome back our park director again.
Good evening. I have no new information to add, but happy to answer any questions on this bill.
Yes, your Aldman Snyder.
Who's going to, who's going to monitor and police this?
Ultimately, our park staff would be probably the first line of defense, if you will. They'll be able to address it and say, hey, this is ordinance. You're not allowed to do that. Then we could work with our other partners at the city if for some reason it escalated from there. And so primarily, this allows our park staff to have a definitive, yes, this is not allowed in our parks facilities as a first line of defense.
Got you. Well, the question I have is how are we going to enforce it? Is it going to be enforced by summons? And who's going to write and sign that summons?
I may refer to our city attorney for assistance.
And the parks, city code section authorizes for summons to be issued by the police department if a violation occurs. So it would be issued like a normal ticket and it would go through our municipal court, punishable by our general penalty ordinance.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for our director? Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
I move to adopt Bill 3654 as ordinance 25 dash 032.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion is that we adopt Bill 3654 to become ordinance 25 dash 032. The motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Snyder. Roll call, please.
Aldman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Aldman Galloway?
Aye.
Aldman Aiken?
Aye.
Aldman Campbell?
Aye.
Aldman Snyder?
Aye.
Aldman Metcalf?
Aye.
We have six aye votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll draw attention to Bill number 3655.
Mayor, I move that Bill 3655 be placed on its second and final reading by title only.
Second by?
Second.
Okay, the motion is that we place Bill number 3655 on a second reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Aiken. All in favor of voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3655, do so by showing hands. And that does carry.
An ordinance of the city of Ozark, Missouri, amending Chapter 120 Parks and Recreation by amending the definition, Section 12010, and adding one new section, Section 12050, regarding nonpedestrian traffic on multi-use trails.
Well, welcome back our park director.
Good evening. For this final piece, I have no new information to add, but happy to answer any additional questions.
Yes, Aldman Campbell.
Just a specific question for the benefit of those listening. ADA compliance, wheelchairs, motor-driven wheelchairs, hand, manual wheelchairs, whatever you would call them. What, if any effect, does this have on those?
Personal mobility devices are protected under this ordinance. And so those things would be allowed on the trail. I think it is clarified, looking to our city attorney, as personal mobility device, I think is the exact language, but I believe that would encompass what you're looking for.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for our director? Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, I move to adopt Bill 3655 as ordinance 25 dash 033.
Second by?
Second.
Okay, the motion is that we adopt three, excuse me, I'm sorry. The motion is we adopt Bill 3655 to become ordinance 25 dash 033. That motion is made by Aldman Hutchison, segment Aldman Aiken. Roll call, please.
Aldman Aiken?
Aye.
Aldman Snyder?
Aye.
Aldman Hutchinson?
Aye.
Aldman Metcalf?
Aye.
Aldman Campbell?
Aye.
Aldman Galloway?
Aye.
We have six aye votes, motion carries.
Thank you. We'll draw attention now to our last second reading bill of the night. That is Bill number 3656.
Your Honor, I move that we place Bill number 3656 on its second reading by title only.
Second.
Okay, the motion is we place Bill number 3656 on a second reading by title only. That motion was made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Metcalf. All voting on the motion to discuss Bill 3656, do so by showing hands, please. It does, yes, it does carry.
An ordinance approving a funding agreement among the city of Ozark, Missouri, Genesis Realty and Development LLC, and SWMO Baseball Properties LLC relating to the development of the Ozark Mountain Sports Complex project. I'll be introducing this topic. If you recall, at the last meeting, our outside counsel, Sarah Granath, introduced it. But on second reading, we felt that it would be fine if I introduced it and answered any questions. This bill proposes a funding agreement between the developer, which is going to propose to develop about 30 acres at the Ozark Mountain Sports Complex. And the funding agreement establishes that the developer will provide the city with funding to pay for both Gilmore Bell's costs for the legal review of the economic development incentives, and any other consultant that the city would need to hire to review the economic development incentives. So it just establishes that first agreement whereby the city can hold the money to pay for the review of those economic development incentives. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you have any questions for our city attorney? I'm not seeing any, so.
Your Honor, I move that we enact Bill number 3656 as ordinance number 25 dash 034.
Okay, so the motion is that we enact Bill number 3656 to become ordinance 25 dash 034. That motion was made by Aldman Galloway, segment Aldman Metcalf. Roll call, please.
Aldman Metcalf?
Aye.
Aldman Snyder?
Aye.
Aldman Campbell?
Aye.
Aldman Galloway?
Aye.
Aldman Aiken?
Aye.
Aldman Hutchinson?
Aye.
We have six aye votes, motion carries.
Thank you very much. We'll now draw attention to our reports. And again, first by the city administrator.
Your Honor, you're going to have two presentations tonight from myself and from Chief Arnold. We're going to, you have at your place, you have an annual report for the city and then you have an annual report for the police department. I'm going to just take just a few minutes and highlight the annual report for the city. That's the one I will focus on first, and if you will indulge me, I'm going to go through it very quickly. There are 21 pages and I do not intend to cover all 21 pages. I thought you might appreciate brevity. This report highlights nine departments. That includes the city administration, finance, human resources, law department, communications, planning and development, parks, public works, and police department. And before I go any further, I just want to say kudos and a great job to Maria Neider and her communications team for the work that they did on putting this together. I think you will see that this is a first-class publication and both of these documents represent a high quality of work for this organization. And Maria, I just want to say thank you for your team and all the departments who contributed their work on this. On page three, we have our mugshots. This is your team. And I want to point out the fact, Ben De Clu was mentioned a couple of times tonight and Ben was included in this annual report because he was an important part of your organization for several months while you were searching for a permanent replacement for that position. And Ben is doing very well and he says hello, so.
Because he's serving Lebanon now?
He is concluding his time in Lebanon, but he has been there for several months in an interim capacity. I want to just highlight your management team. 54% of your team is either new or in a new position. That would include myself, Cameron Smith, Maria Neider, Randall Whitman, who just joined us a little over 90 days ago, Tracy Hassler as our HR director. Tracy's been with the organization for several years, but recently was promoted in September, and Hayden, who was promoted to the park director in July. So some familiar faces, but nevertheless, you, 2024 represented a year of transition and change for this organization. This is your team and one of the things that we hope we do every time that we have the opportunity to engage the board is instill in you a sense of confidence that we're working extremely hard and attempting to do good work for this organization and this community. I'll turn to page four and page five. This is a brief highlight of our finance department. I want to remind you that we are a full-service city with very complex systems and processes. We have almost a $47 million expense budget that funds over 200 employees in this organization. And I want to commend Mary Edna, our finance director. You'll see in the middle of page four, we highlight what's called a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. This is received from the GFOA. It is a very nice award and it doesn't come easily. There's a lot of work that goes into getting that award and I want to just recognize her efforts for that. Going to page six and seven, want to remind you that, yes, we are a utility company. We are providing water and sewer services to over 10,300 customers that use our services. Human Resources Department indicated we have over 123 full-time employees with 110 part-time employees. We run a We run a complex organization, and taking care of the employees in this organization and making sure that we, all of the cogs are fitting and doing what they're supposed to be doing, that we have the appropriate policies and procedures that are in place is no small task. Approximately 73% of this workforce of your employees have between zero and 10 years of experience, so relatively young organization, if you will, and in terms of their years of experience and their tenure with this organization. I want to thank Amanda and her team, the law department, for everything that they do in keeping us doing what we're supposed to be doing and keeping it done in an orderly and legal fashion. Amanda and her team are fully staffed with four full-time employees that make up that department. I mentioned Maria and the communications team. You will notice on pages nine, 10, and 11 of this report, we take just a little bit more time to talk about the communications effort because this board made a strategic initiative several months ago to invest more dollars and resources into communicating and engaging the public. And you're going to see in this report, especially on page 11, you will see where we are utilizing Facebook, we're utilizing StreamYard to do our online videos, where our Facebook pages for the OC and the police department and our Instagram. You're going to see across the board, the utilization of those social media platforms has increased significantly. That is a, there is a tremendous correlation between the amount of the investment and the resources and the results, the positive results that you're seeing. Want to highlight briefly on page 11, I'm going to jump to Parks and Recreation. We obviously, we talked about Hayden being promoted to the park director. Hayden was not new to the department. I think Hayden, you've been here for six years in another capacity, and he took over as the director in July. One of the things that occurred in August that I think was extremely well-received in this community was the reopening of the Garrison Springs Community Forest, and we highlight that on page 15. Upgrades to the FEMA shelter, which we have made and have implemented, various projects. We have over 6,000 members, monthly members at the OC, which is, I believe, almost an all-time high, and we're running around between 5,600 and 6,000, thanks to the board action that we have taken steps to upgrade a 15-year-old facility and make many facility upgrades at the OC, including HVAC units, all of the lighting in the aquatics center, and new amenities and upgrades to the community rooms. So if you haven't visited the OC recently, you're going to see changes that have already taken place or they're going to be made. Public Works, you heard, we had several public works action items tonight that you heard and you took action on. We have 101 miles of streets, and we're going to be repaving and doing maintenance surfacing to those streets. Since 2022, I'm on page 18, we've had 4,374 linear feet of concrete and trail finished this year. And as you know, we're currently working on the Chadwick Flyer. It's no longer 278 contract days, but from the time that contract was approved, it was 278 days, and the work is progressing. And I believe we are scheduling a major groundbreaking and ribbon cutting, not a ribbon cutting, but a groundbreaking event for that. I believe we're looking in July. We haven't selected the date yet, but we're going to be honing in on that. And finally, I'll conclude, and our chief is going to make his remarks here about the police department. We spend approximately 30, between 33 and 35% of our general fund budget goes to support our public safety efforts. And I will tell you that that number is in line with many other communities. Communities range between usually 28% to 40% of their general fund budget goes to support public safety. And it makes up one of the largest departments in our general fund budget. The police department had responded to over 19,894 calls in 2024. And if my average math is correct, that's approximately 54 calls per day that they've responded to, and I think they do a fantastic job. We have a tremendous police department. Those are some very quick and brief highlights of this annual report. We're happy to answer any questions after you have had an opportunity to read it and review it. We'll respond to any information that you have. Maria, this is already online, correct? Yes, so this information is available for the public to download. We do have hard copies that are, some limited hard copies that are available. And with that, I will conclude my comments and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions from the board for our city administrator? Yes, ma'am.
I found in the old one of these, we had the most useful sheet, one of the most useful sheets for me to put on Facebook and to put other places and to give people was the breakdown of revenue.
Yes, ma'am.
Because most of, most people do not understand how little money we get out of their money. I see the sales tax. Is the property tax not, I didn't see it here. Is it on here?
We, we just picked, there's too much information in the budget to try to digest, so we listed sales tax because sales tax is the largest producer of revenue in our budget. We get about $6.5 million a year from sales tax, and so we, and it's, since we're such a, we rely heavily on retail purchases in our community, we thought that would be the component that most people would be focusing on. Property tax, the majority of your property tax bill goes to support the school district in this particular community.
And I think that was really an eye-opener for people. Maybe we could do an insert or something that we could use too, because most people think they pay, they complain about the property tax, and they say, well, the city takes all my property tax. They don't realize that, that they're what, are there 11 taxing districts, something like that?
Yes, right.
And so when they see that, they realize we don't have very much at all to work with from the property tax. And maybe that isn't, shouldn't be here, but I sure would like to have something like that, just the graphs, the pictorals.
Sure.
Would be great to use.
We can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you very much. Now we'll draw attention to our chief police and their report.
All right, so Jeremy doesn't get mad at me, I'm supposed to just ask you if you have any questions? Is that what you want me to? I'll be quick also. So in front of you is our 2024 annual report. I do want to give a lot of credit to Maria and Ben and their staff. I don't think I expressed to them how much of a help they are. When I took over as chief, I did this report using Microsoft Word. And that is time-intensive, so. You know, I couldn't be more proud to lead your police department of professional, effective, efficient law enforcement practitioners. I say professional because we are. We are a very professional organization. We have the highest standards possible, which we voluntarily adhere to. There's no state law that says we have to, but we decide voluntarily that we are going to adhere to the highest standards of law enforcement, and we do that annually through our accreditation with the Missouri Police Chiefs Charitable Foundation. So some of our highlights in 2024, and I'm not going page by page, I'm just going to hit off a few. Probably first and foremost, the biggest need our department has, still has, is facility and facility improvements. This year, thankfully, we were able to do some significant upgrades for our facility to the tune of about $450,000. We added some multi-use office space, cubicles-type space. We added locker rooms, which included shower and restroom facilities for our staff. We added additional interview rooms, and we upgraded our only conference room to a more professional environment to conduct businesses, so. But that, that still is the most pressing need we have is to address our facility issues. Another big highlight is we rolled out a new recruiting initiative with the help of Maria and her staff, which has been very successful for us. We've successfully recruited five new police officers through that, where we hire them on, put them through the academy, pay for their education, pay them while they're there, and we've, we've seen the quality of our applicants significantly increase by doing that, so. Now on to things like, that you may get asked about by constituents and stuff like that. Calls for service. We were down in calls for service last year by about 8%, which is the trend with really all law enforcement. Calls typically have been down the last few years for many different reasons. But we still continue to see the full gamut of police-related calls, which they're handled by our patrol division, our uniformed staff. They're the ones that you see out in police cars, being proactive, being visible, hopefully proactively reducing crime and being a, a big billboard to deter anyone from committing crime in our city. Now, crime overall decreased by about 1.7%, okay? Crimes against persons decreased by 9.5%. Crimes against property, 25%. So better place to live right now, but crimes against society increased 40%. Now, people ask me, well, why is that? Well, crimes against property and crimes against people, we play a reactive role in that. A crime happens, we get called, we react to it, we investigate it. Hopefully, we're able to, you know, figure out who did it and, and present charges through the criminal justice system. Crimes against society are things that we can proactively control. So when calls for service are down, that gives my officers more time to be proactive and, and find violations against society. Things like driving while intoxicated, things like drug possession, drug distribution, things like that. Those crimes are up because we have the time, the unallocated time, to go out and look for people who are doing things that, that really deteriorate the fabric of our community, so. But overall, crime did decrease. We had a decent increase in motor vehicle crashes, which we don't like to see, but we did. Construction probably played a little bit to that, but we are, we're trying to address that as much as possible. Our traffic stops, something that we get asked a lot, why are we always out on 65 Highway, right? Why aren't we in our neighborhoods? Why aren't we in, in our, our community more? 55.2% of our traffic stops occurred on city streets in our community, in our neighborhoods. We spend a majority of our time patrolling those areas. It's just so vast that not everybody sees that all the time. 32% of our traffic stops were on US Highway 65. Why? Because about 25 to 30% of our call volume comes, or is generated in reference to proximity or, or a incident that occurred on 65 Highway. Very busy. You guys have heard me talk about 30-plus million people going up and down that every year, so it would only make sense that, that we go out there and spend some time to try to be proactive. Another thing that a lot of people talk about is how we fund our police department by writing, you know, millions of tickets every year. We write about 15.4% of all of our traffic stops in, in the citation. So 85% of people were able to change their behavior through conversations, through education, and things like that. One thing that also is a good thing with call volume decreasing, our response times improved last year. So our response times to priority calls for service, it takes 4 minutes and 27 seconds to get an Ozark police officer to you in the event of a priority emergency. That's 1 minute and 7 seconds quicker than we were able to in 2023. That's simply because we had police officers available because our call volume decreased. Non-priority calls, we can get to you in about 6 minutes and 21 seconds, and that's a decrease of 44 seconds. Your staff is still, receives an increasingly amount of, of training. We trained over 4,700 hours last year, our staff, which is well above the state mandated amounts by multiple, multiple times. Some of our special units that people ask a lot about, our K-9 units were deployed 314 times. For those of you that were on the board when I proposed that, I thank you for supporting that because they are making an impact every day out on our streets as a force multiplier for us in very specific type situations. Our drones were deployed 33 times, and our motor units, which were new in 2024, we've seen significant impact, not only in enforcement, but also outreach. There's a lot of people who want to come and talk to us about motorcycles. A lot of our board wants to talk about motorcycles, right? And education as well. Another area that we're seeing significant increases in is in K-9 control. From '22 to '23, we saw a 32% increase in K-9 control calls. From '23 to '24, we saw another 26% increase. We do attribute that to, quite a few people got pets during COVID to keep them company and things like that, and maybe now they're not being the most responsible pet owners. So that is something that we're continuing to evaluate, that trend, and, and see what we need to do resource-wise to, to help that. Our support units, we processed 2,355 offense reports, almost 1,200 traffic citations, 228 criminal citations, and just shy of 3,000 pieces of evidence in our investigations. Our 2024 Officer of the Year was Thomas Richardson, a traffic enforcement officer. He is a diligent officer. He is positive. He's everything that you want. I wish I had a whole bunch more of, you know, him who just comes to work happy, ready to be a servant every day. I will tell you, his main focus is on driving while intoxicated investigations. He goes out every day and looks for people who are, who are putting everyone else on the roadway in danger, and I'm proud of him for that. Our community engagement, we continued the things that, that we're doing well. Our hero in training, which was a Missouri Municipal League Innovation Award winner a few years back, Cops for Kids, Friday Night Lights, Operations Giving and Hope, our meal services that we do down at the Ozark Senior Center, dozens of other community events that we attend, 5Ks, school events, our first charity softball game with the fire department. We're doing a lot in the community, but I'll, I'll continue to say, we're, we're stretched fairly thin when it comes to that. We, unlike other departments our size, we do not have dedicated community engagement, community resource units that spend their full time doing that. And that's something that we, we continue to evaluate. However, we just have other priorities that, that need and have to be met before we, we do things like that, so. In summary, you guys have a police department that you should be proud of. I'm proud of them. They're an extraordinary group of professionals, and I'm honored to lead them.
Any questions for the chief? Yes, sir.
Hey, chief, what is the, just out of curiosity, what's the conviction rate on cases that are presented?
I do not have that right in front of me, but I can get you that information and get back with you.
I'd appreciate that.
Yeah?
Anyone else? Any questions for our chief? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you're all doing. Next, we have our planning and development department. Welcome back.
Yes, in addition to our monthly report, I have a few things to share. We do have Planning Zoning Commission meeting scheduled, we'll make it from tonight, on the 28th. There's two agenda items, two rezoning requests. One at 1014, 1018 South Third Street, rezoning of a small strip center from C4 to C2. We also have a rezoning of the Assembly of the God property on South Street to accommodate the Seven Brew Restaurant, or Coffee Shop, excuse me. And then two, I shared with you some owner occupancy maps, or homeownership maps, for each ward, and this is just a, a great way to track homeownership. It's a good indicator of stability. We look, we could look at these on an annual basis, semi-annual, and see fluctuations, homeownership trends, whether it's in the, in a neighborhood or downtown or wherever, it's just a good indication of neighborhood health and the city health. I will make one correction that Alderman Campbell pointed out. This does include duplexes or attached housing, so you'll see anything that's in green is indicated as being rental property, or it's not owner occupied, so. Thank you for catching that, sir. I'd be glad to answer any questions I can.
Any questions from the board?
For Seven Brew going.
Sir?
Seven, you mentioned Seven Brew?
Seven Brew, yes, there's an application to open a coffee shop on the corner of, it's Assembly of the God property there on South Street, I can't remember the corner street.
Seventeen. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, if not, our last report.
Good evening. In addition to our report, I'd like to kind of give notification that some of those projects that the board approved last year, including our HVAC, start off in the next few weeks, and so we're very excited. You'll see movement at the OC, some pretty substantial movement as they start to crane in those HVAC units and, and get our HVAC working the way it should again, and so it's very exciting for us, doing it at a great time, right before it gets super hot, and so we'll, we'll have a, a great functional building. But happy to answer any questions on that report.
Anyone? Okay. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. Any from final board comments for adjourn? Yes, sir.
Well, actually, I do. Earlier today, you know, the world suffered a loss with, with Pope Francis, and those that, you know, practice the Catholic religion, we need to keep them in our minds because that's something that they do, and it's just something that's near and dear to me, so appreciate that.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, is it, enter a motion to adjourn?
Motion that we adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Okay. The motion that have been made that we adjourned, the motion was made by Alderman Metcalf, second Alderman Snyder, all in favor of voting to, for the motion for adjournment, do just by showing hands, please, and that does carry, and we are adjourned.